Hide that candy.
Are you guys ready?
Anytime you want.
Good evening and thank you for coming to the Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. The time is 6 o'clock. I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Citizens input. You have anybody that would like to speak? Sure.
My name is Coleman McDonough. I think some of you people know me. Some of you people used to be on the planning board. I submitted a packet. It includes a plan of my 280-acre commercial and industrial park and 44 units of workforce housing. You have also in your packet a letter of deficiency, deficiencies. And you also have, the tax assessor mentioned to me that I wasn't on the agenda tonight and that she didn't have the information that was needed. And that I feel that, you know, it was stated in my letter and I think that most of you received the letter that I wrote. And that I'm also, you know, have a bunch of frustration with this project and it moving forward. And I wanted to address that also with the board. And that since December, we've been trying to get bonds. And I know that Mr. Doggett, back when Tim, I forget his name, was here. They redesigned the whole bond to have on-call. It's been, in your packet, you're going to see an email chain that addresses all the bonds. Back in December 4th, we were requesting the three bonds to get started on our project. It took us almost four months to get our conditional notice of decision, which we should have received in 30 days. It expires in six months, so we only have like a month and a half and two months and it expires. I think Mr. Doggett is, has a mission in life for my project not to start. And I think that there's a lot of people that are starting to drink the Kool-Aid, like Dennis Moran. Dennis Moran has denied me my pre-construction meeting. I mean, that's borderline illegal. I mean, it's a part of the condition is refusing me to have a pre-construction meeting. And he's also told my bank, who last December asked him for the bond format, and he still won't answer the bond format if it's right, wrong, or indifferent. So we can post the bonds to get started. I've spent millions of dollars in engineering, wetland survey, equipment. There's a building, we've already got it. It's sitting, for three years, it's been sitting on-site. That's how long this project has taken to get started. Again, Jim Doggett has a mission to blow me up and not to have this project start, okay? And in that mission, you have no idea how much money it has cost the taxpayers in this town. This building is sitting horizontally. If it was vertical three years ago, Turner Motorsports pays $44,000 for their $20,000. This is a $20,000. These are rough figures. This is a 20,000 square foot building. Three years, $44,000. You've already, just on this one building, you've lost $132,000 in taxes. And, you know, I'm under the understanding that Newton's in dire straits for tax money. This letter of deficiency, I'm asking the board for it not to go out to any other person. And it's been mailed to appraisers, my bank. It seems to be a mission of Mr. Doggett's for blowing up this project, okay? We've been in this building, in these buildings, 9A, B, and C, for almost eight years now. Eight years-ish, right? So that's like Sam Zinny coming up to you guys in your house after you bought it eight years ago and saying, "I've got problems." You know, "You're going to have to move out or we're not going to give you, you know, you know, let you sell it," or whatever. I mean, eight years ago, I got certificate of occupancy and, you know, change of use. We applied for change of use. Ravensburg was in there, Turner Motorsports was a company before that. You've got Munters, who's moving out of town, right? And you've got Sonnys. These all, if there was any deficiencies, these should have been addressed at the time of COs. Everybody signed off, road agent, conservation, building department. Everybody signed off eight years ago, okay? So he's already blown up the Turner Motorsports sale, okay? Done. We're in court, okay? Because of this deficiency letter, okay? And you can see the answers in the deficiency letter. And I think all of you have my telephone number. If you have any questions, you know, you're more than welcome to give me a call. Because, I mean, this deficiency letter is just, I was more than happy to pay. And this gets into my tax abatement, which is, I think, clearly spelt out. I'll ask the assessor if she wants more information. But I was happy to pay all my taxes, you know, if the Turner Motorsports closing went through, right, that Mr. Doggett blew up. Mr. Doggett knows explicitly. And he knows, he filed a Mylaw, and he knows that the condo docs and declarations have not been filed on 27-4. So legally, these are not six separate lots. And I think my daughter, who works in the office, has said that you've, and I'd been told also that Doggett went in and told the tax assessor to go up on my taxes. But along with that, by having six individual lots, you gained another $150,000 that I had no problems paying. But he blew up the sale? Here I am. They're not six legal lots. There's no condo docs, no declaration that has been filed, which is the legal formality of having six individual lots. It's been cited by a New Hampshire certified appraiser. And I've also hired a tax consultant. So again, you have no idea how much this man has caused this town, you know, in tax money. It's, you're going to see some more letters coming in. And this letter, I just want to let you know, has been formally filed, right, with the state boards, ethics, attorney general, Rockingham County. And this isn't the first letter that's gone out to Rockingham County. This is like the third or fourth, fifth offense for concealing documents and altering documents with Mr. Doggett, okay? And it clearly shows, since last December, he designed the bond format. And he won't give me a copy of the boilerplate bond form. So my bank can post the bonds, which is a condition, okay? The notice of decision, taken four months, I mean, that's unacceptable. You can see that this is purposely being delayed and sabotaged, okay? And, you know, they won't provide me with a construction meeting. This project is going to bring near $3 million in. And if you think I'm going away after three years and spending millions of dollars, right? We should have started this, this project should have been finished like 10 years ago. And there's been, I received your complaint letter, I talked to Sammy. You know, I've addressed everything with Sam. Just let me build this. All the noise, all the dust will go away, and you'll get your $3 million every year. I want nothing to be done than to build this project and move out of town. And we've accommodated the neighbors the best we can. Back when Dennis Nada was here, we built a 12-foot retaining earthen berm for the neighbors. You know, we've done everything we can, you know, as far as noise. I'm very considerate of my neighbors. But I said to Sammy, and I just want to let you reiterate with this board, these people that bought their residential houses knew or should have known what they were buying next to. But just let us finish this project and be done with it and put the buildings up. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Many of you know me, Tom Leiborg, builder for Coleman. I do most of the permitting work with the engineers and lawyers. I want to speak on a couple of things tonight that's real concerns to me and to Coleman and to the whole project as a whole. I think we've designed a pretty good product at this point. We redesigned, redesigned, redesigned it till it finally fit and made everybody happy. We have worked with, you know, all the boards. We have worked with the neighbors to the best of ability. Not everybody's happy, but the majority is. Sergeant Woods, we worked really hard with to get the housing in with them. And so they, you know, we don't touch them in any way. We worked hard at all this. Now, the thing is that when we work hard and get as far as we do every time, the problem is, is that we have somebody that's sitting and he's blocking us at every intersection that we can do because he holds precision in the town that doesn't matter if I go to plan or go to zoning, he's the same guy blocking it. We've never had this person being the secretary doing both, doing those two jobs together. Now, I don't think all of you here enough, long enough, to understand what's gone on over the years, the vendettas, if you want to call it, for nothing. But for us to get a notice of decision, would you want me coming into your office and getting ticked off because the guy just lies to you, "Oh yeah, no, I sent it to your engineer." Drive up to the engineer. Where is it? Go through their mailroom? Nothing. Week later, when he's back in the office, I drive down, banging the door. I said, "What's going on, Jim?" "Oh, I'm going to get signed this week. I will send it out this week." I said, "Could you send it certified mail this time?" I mean, just lie after lie after lie, right? We get all kinds of stuff to come back from the town engineer and we never get it till the day of the meeting. Stuff like that. I mean, I'm just tired of this. Listen, we build in other communities here in New England. They love us. I mean, they frigging support us. They want the investment. They're happy. We come in, we leave, they're done. There's no issues. I mean, some of the towns even put us on their frigging, you know, town page on their website, you know? We go through the meetings. I mean, the laws are basically the same in every town. There's not too different. I mean, in New Hampshire, they all kind of stay the same. And we managed to get through it. But for every reason in this town. And, I mean, I have help. I have Bob Marshon. He has the plight of his heart in what we want to do. Dan, you were very good. You're on the board. You were help. You know Mike? Hmm, zoning? Yeah. What I'm just saying is like, it's a hard thing to do. It's a huge investment. The town needs every benefit. I mean, our roads are starting to look like frigging Mogadishu paths now. I mean, it's a collection of patches. I mean, it's terrible. We can't even, I mean, it's not, I'm not yelling at you guys for this. I'm yelling at everybody else too. You know what? We got to pony up and get this done, you know? If we got to take a bond that they keep voting down, people that can't keep voting this stuff down. We just keep, you know, kicking the can down the road, people. What I'm saying is that this is a great economic activity that happens in this park. You don't even see it from the road. The few neighbors, yeah, we have some issues on Howard Lane. Everything else, we're pretty good at right now. Most of the people are going to be impacted from here on in. We'll be in plasticile. But again, I say the same thing again. Let us build. Stop trying to block every little thing by certain little people here in town. And let us build, and we get it done, and we will get out. You guys will enjoy everything we built. You will collect the tax money on it and all the financial activity, the jobs that go with it, and the ability to shop with the different vendors in there, or whatever. I don't know. But I'm pleading with you again, one more time, that we need to do something. You can't have one person doing those two jobs in this office. It is not working. It hasn't worked for the last four years, and it will never work. We never had a problem in that office before, until now. But with the person, we've had history, planning board, selectmen office, everywhere else. Wherever, it doesn't matter where he sat, he has fought us all these years. I mean, come on. It's not that big of a project. Yeah, dollar wise, it is. We should have been out of there a long time ago, like Coleman said, like done and gone. This is ridiculous. Well, the way we had the product designed now, which is in front of you, it will build out pretty quick. There's still some hitches in it. There's some more stuff to go through. But I don't want to fight like this the rest of the few, you know, phase three, phase four. Phase five and two are done. And I just don't want to have the fight. We can't talk to them. There's no communication with them other than email, back and forth, back and forth. See, in two weeks, three weeks, whenever. So I felt tonight, I know you don't have much power over any of them, but I know you have power over the employees. So keep this out of court and let's get this done. Figure something out. This can't go on. It's costing you guys so much money every year. It's ridiculous. All you do is keep kicking the can down the road. I don't know what to say. You know, I see my taxes where, I've been here 20 years in this town. My taxes, like, is probably five times what it was since I moved in. And it's the same for everybody else. It doesn't change. Joe's been here a long time. I think you need to do something here, guys. The opportunity is there. These buildings, they'll be here long after we're all gone. That's the way I look at it. So I know it's a lot to ask, but thank you very much for your time. Hopefully, we can get some action. Thank you.
Mr. McDonough and Tom, do you guys have time this week to meet with Mr. O'Meara?
Absolutely.
So just call him tomorrow and set it up because he had just texted me and said, tell them that I will meet them this week. So if you guys can call him tomorrow, he wants to meet with you.
Absolutely.
So hopefully, we can get something going to try to alleviate whatever's going on, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Have a nice night. Next up, we have Greg Senko from the Country Pond Lake Association for the watershed presentation. Is that correct?
Yes, it's actually maybe something a little smaller than the whole watershed presentation.
Sorry, that's just what I have written down, so I'm going off that.
It's a little piece of, it's a little project we'd like to do. And thank you to the board for having me here tonight and giving me some of your time. What I'm here to do is to ask your permission for a project that we'd like to do to help improve conditions in Country Pond. And I first spoke to the board about our watershed management plan and a grant that we were applying for, I guess it's about four years ago. And this is the next phase in that project. So if you could advance to the next slide. So there is a watershed management plan, as you referenced. We received a grant from the New Hampshire DES to update that watershed management plan. The purpose of the plan is to examine the condition in Country Pond, look at the reasons why we have frequent cyanobacteria blooms in Country Pond. The reason is that there's too much phosphorus in the water. It feeds the cyanobacteria. And phosphorus comes from stormwater runoff. You're probably familiar with MS4 permit requirements and work that you're going on within the town to battle these same kinds of issues. But Country Pond Lake Association is working with our community and New Hampshire DES to try and bring some of our own projects to fruition that will help these problems. So the updated watershed management plan identified a number of sites around Country Pond where improvements could be made. They really focused on public-owned lands where we could implement a project versus private lands where you have to have a homeowner do that kind of a project. We do outreach programs and we're trying to educate the lake community on how they can improve conditions on their land. But as a lake association, our best chances at making improvements are to find publicly owned places where stormwater could be better managed. We reduce the runoff. If you could go to the next slide, please? And we've actually accomplished one of those projects. It's in Kingston. It's on Concanon Road. Our first grant paid for the infiltration trench that was installed on Concanon Road. It also identified another project that we tried to do in this first grant, which was improvements to the Newton Boat Ramp. Are you all familiar with the Boat Ramp, where it is and what's like? If that's a picture of it there, and you can see the big rut right down through the Boat Ramp. So our first grant was for $50,000. It requires matching in local funding. Matching can be monetary. It can be work in kind. Contributions like the road agent has helped us with this project, contributed some of his time. It's our volunteer work that we do to manage these projects. And that's how we meet the match requirements. But the whole grant process took a very long time. Like I said, I spoke to the board almost four years ago when we asked permission to do this project originally. But it took two whole years for the final approval of the grant. Could you go to the next slide, please? It was a very long approval process. And during that time, we had COVID come along. The project costs for things like cement and asphalt just blew up. And so we figured, once we had the grant funds approved, we didn't really have a handle on the whole project cost. We didn't have detailed engineering plans. So with New Hampshire DES's approval, we decided the best thing to do would be implement that infiltration trench, which was a low-cost project. And we set out a bid and we had an engineering firm draw up detailed engineering plans, which, you know, gave us a better idea of the costs. And the engineering firm that designed the whole Boat Ramp improvements was someone you probably know. It's KV Partners, who's the town engineer. So they've come up with a detailed plan of how we would improve the conditions there, stabilize the Boat Ramp, infiltrate the stormwater runoff that starts on Country Pond Road and runs down that ramp. So, next slide, please? In the first phase of this project, we did ask for a letter from the select board, and that's really what I'm here to ask for tonight, is a letter of support. It's required in the grant application. We need, you know, landowner permission to do a project like this. The town Boat Ramp is town-owned. It's managed by the Recreation Commission. And we'll need another letter of support in order to apply for a grant to get the funds that we're going to need to actually implement these improvements to the Boat Ramp. The improvements to the Boat Ramp include a catch basin, an infiltration basin at the top of the road and the ramp. There'll be concrete pads that run down into the water and provide a stable surface for backing boats in. There'll be 45 feet of concrete pads, 15 feet above the waterline, 30 feet into the waterline. Above that, it will be paved all the way up to Country Pond Road. And then there'll be an infiltration swale down the side, which will be used for the overflow from the infiltration basin. The good news here is that Mike Paverro has always been behind this project. And he's stated that he will contribute his time and work to implement this plan, which is how we'll get a lot of our matching contributions for this grant. CPLA does work like monitoring the water quality in Country Pond. That work is, can be counted towards the match, our management of the project, the other outreach that we do to the local community. But the big matching contribution this time will be from Mike Paverro. So with his support, we believe that the grant will cover all the material costs, which are expected to be about $70,000 in materials to do this project. And the matching contributions, we can make that up and there'll be no cost to the town as we anticipate it now for doing this project.
What's the match? Like 80, 20, 70?
It's 40% of the project cost.
So 60, 40?
Uh, yeah. Yep, and we work very closely with the New Hampshire DES watershed grant administrator for this region. She's been a huge help to CPLA through these projects. And she feels that this is definitely a project we can do at this point in time. We have enough information. We can meet the match requirements. And it has a very good chance of winning the next round of grant awards. There's only a limited amount of money that New Hampshire DES has for these kinds of projects. But our project, she feels, will rank very highly because we already had the watershed management plan updated. We did this first round and we're managing that successfully. And so the next round, you know, fingers crossed, we'll get a much quicker approval than we did the first time round because that was the big hangup. If you could go to the next slide, please? Okay. If anyone is interested in any of the details of the plan, I have a copy of the prints here. You can look at those, review those if you wish.
Yeah, we got sent a copy of them and I had looked over them. They went into great detail. It was very nice to look at. Was there also not a part where you were going to address over by the parking too? The parking area? There was supposed to be a little, I don't know if that was going to be another phase for runoff over by that?
On Country Pond Road?
Yeah.
No, I'm not aware of anything.
Is it just up by the main road like you were talking about earlier? Maybe I'm mistaken?
This project doesn't encompass any change to the parking situation along Country Pond Road.
Not the parking situation, but the runoff from where the parking area is?
Oh, in as much as the sloping, the part of Country Pond Road that slopes towards the Boat Ramp, that runoff will be infiltrated by the system, yeah?
Yeah, it does say construct a driveway apron at the parking lot entrance to stabilize the loose aggregate.
Yeah, all right.
Says that in your proposal. And it's okay.
You know, there's parking all along the street there, so I wasn't sure what you're referring to.
Nope, that's good. It's definitely worthwhile.
And the next slide, please?
Okay.
I think this kind of, I've already summarized most of this. But what we're looking to do is apply for the grant in September. Approval should happen by the end of the year. But considering our experience in the past, we don't really anticipate being able to do any work until fall of 2025. And of course, this ramp is used daily by boaters coming and going from Country Pond. So we need to do this work out of season, either early spring or late fall. It's going to take approximately two weeks to do the work. So that's a long amount of downtime for access in and out of Country Pond at that particular point. Okay. And I think that was the last slide? Oh, no, last slide, okay. I did meet with Joe previously and provided the letter that the board wrote for us last time, the letter of support. It was really nicely done. That's what we would need for our next grant application if the board could approve that.
With that being said, I'll make a motion that the board sign a letter of support for the Country Pond Lake Association watershed project to be done.
So do you need us to write the letter?
It's already written.
It's already written. You have the letter. Perfect. Okay. Anybody else, anything to say? No?
No.
No questions?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your diligence.
Thank you for your hard work.
This will make the This will make the access there so much better than it is now.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
100%.
Thank you.
Right now, it's keeping some boats out of there.
So it's stormwater runoff, not duck poop?
I wish we could do something about the ducks.
Well, what is it? What do they say? Use a cannon, a loud noise to scare them all off?
We're not going to try and manage the runoff. Do they make diapers?
Oh, jeez.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Alright, next up, Chief.
Just check with Robin and she'll get you that letter. Okay.
Come on down.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Just going to touch quickly on last month for the fire department, once I find my paper. I submitted it, like I always do, the beginning of the following month. Total last month, we had 47 calls. Just a couple of high points. On May 15, the department responded with Engine 2 and Car 1 to a commercial building fire in Plastow. On that same day, A1 went to an unfounded motor vehicle accident. They also responded to three medicals. Out of those three, one was a mutual aid to the town of Merrimack where they transported. They also went to Whittier Street when Trinity was never dispatched from Rock and Trinity never took the call. So that one day, A1 did two transports. They also, on the same day, did a transport from South Main Street because Trinity was also unavailable.
Can you give me my shock lock?
I'm sure there's a theme going to be coming in the next few months. On May 20, Engine 2 was called to the town of Kingston for building fire. East Kingston, I'm sorry. On the 22nd, Engine 2 and Car 2 was dispatched to Kingston for residential fire. On May 23rd, Engine 2 responded to the town of Hampstead for station coverage. And the big thing was Engine 2, Engine 1, Tank 4, Tank 5 had its annual NFP hose and ladder testing done.
Did we pass?
Out of... With the exception of a 75-foot inch and 3/4 hose and a 10-foot short of 4-inch hose. Both have been ordered to replace. Other than that, close to, well, I believe it's over 3,000 feet of hose passed and all the ladders passed.
Awesome.
Okay? The other thing, just to make the board aware, that on next Monday, from 10 to 2, the fire department will be hosting its blood pressure clinic. We usually host twice a year, spring and fall. Okay? Also, with the help of... I left it over there. With the help of Trish and the EOC, Newton will be hosting July 23rd and 24th from the state railroad safety class at the fire station. Okay? And lastly, Engine 2, just... I sent an email to the town yesterday. Engine 2 has had a noise in it. When it takes sharp turns, you can hear some rubbing. The Greenwood mechanic found that the fan was hitting the shroud. I delivered the truck yesterday with one of the members, the Cummings, because it's a Coming engine. And they found that it's an issue with one of the engine mounts. There is... We tried getting it on the warranty. There is no warranty. It was a one-year warranty. The rubber bushing in the engine mount just wore out. They gave an estimate of eight to 10 hours and approximately $2,900 to fix. That is the new truck. So I just want to let the board know that since it's an emergency, hopefully you're not going to yell at me. We gave them the green light because it's sitting in concave. They go ahead and order the parts.
No, take care of your trucks.
Thank you.
Do you want to fix the other stuff?
Yes, what that ended up being?
Yeah.
That actually was fixed in-house and good point. We can touch on it. On that, the oldest truck, there was a vacuum line, a plastic vacuum line that just came off the brass fitting.
Really?
So all we had to do was put it in. One thing for the board, several years ago, the board voted that to have any work done on... Any, any work done on the fire apparatus, it had to go through an NFPA-certified mechanic. My recommendation to the board is if you could amend that, because that included changing the light bulb, that it would go... And mind you, they're getting $175, $200 an hour and we got to drive it to Attleboro, Maine. Those are... A wall pull. Can you guys?
No, Mike, we can't.
Do you remember when that was done?
I would... I'll say what I think the motion should be and somebody can just do it. But I think the motion should be, Chief, you have authorization to fix the trucks in-house if it's not a critical piece of... Piece of... What am I trying to say?
Piece of equipment?
Well, no, because the whole piece of equipment is critical. But I want you to be able to change the light bulb. I want you to be able to fix a brass tubing. I don't want you to feel like you're handcuffed. But I don't expect you to do brakes to the thing. And I don't expect you to do a tune-up and fix the fire apparatus or whatever on that. I don't expect that.
Can we put it? Drive train, brakes, engine, pump?
Everything else you can do.
And anything that doesn't violate a manufacturer's warranty?
There is none of them that have warranties.
There are a lot of warranties now. But I get where you're going. I get where you're going, Mike.
But you have to put it in there because it's next vehicle.
Do we need to amend the initial thing that was done way back when?
So, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Can you leave that on our plate for the next one so we have proper wording for you?
Absolutely.
We'll take care of it.
Absolutely. And we'll just to remind us...
I will make a motion to amend the prior...
Like five years ago.
I want to see that prior motion so we can do it right.
We should find out what it is.
Yep.
Can we put that on Jim's to-do list?
We'll find the prior motion.
Create the motion for us?
And then we'll take care of it.
About five years ago, Rob. Easy five.
We'll find it. We'll figure it out.
So simply, all you have to do is state that he knows what should go to that mechanic and what doesn't need to go to that mechanic. And so it should be up to his discretion.
Is there a repair that you need to do right away?
No.
No, he already did it.
No, but...
He already did it. He just feels bad because he violated it.
I honestly, for a little plastic hose that took five minutes, I honestly couldn't see calling Greenwood Fire Apparatus, paying for a road truck to come up here, for him to tighten a brass fitting, the cost. When we could just do it in-house and it's technically not even touching the pump.
Good training.
Yeah. No, I think we'll put it on the next agenda. We'll tell Jim and we'll get the wording that we want on it.
Beautiful.
Obviously, you'll be here.
We'll do it right once so we can put it to bed.
Yeah, I want it to be done.
Are there any other of those things that have been way done in the past that are stupid that we need to fix for you that you can think of?
Yep. The company's coming up July, the middle of July, to do the annual pump certifications on the four trucks. Fingers crossed, that should go good. The dry hydrants and so stirrants, I reached out to three vendors with an RFP. One hasn't touched us. One, I have his proposal in here. The third actually came into the fire station today. I hate to say it because it was brought up earlier. He's waiting for a documentation from the planning board for site drawings of one of the so stirrants.
Okay.
So that is... That's where that's on hold?
We have a member that's on the planning board, so we'll see if we can...
What is he waiting on?
You want me to say it?
No.
No.
Which so stern? I'll let you know after the meeting. Because I don't want to give the wrong information to the board. From what he explained to me, he needs to know how they were installed, where all the fittings are, so he can give a good quote on what work needs to be done. Because I guess when so stern comes into town, planning board has to approve it.
Yep.
Fire doesn't, it goes on that side of the table. So planning board should have the site plans.
Sure.
And that's what he's looking for. The dry hydrants, which are the ponds, we haven't touched yet. We're working on... I got it backwards, I apologize. We're working on the so stirrants. Then we're going to work on the dry hydrants.
Alright, so get us the location for which one that is specifically. And then we will get that information.
Perfect.
And we will expedite it to him so that he can get the bid so that we can get this in.
Yeah. No, I'm glad to see that he's working on it, you know? I really am, to be honest with you, so...
And the other thing, I sent the contractor that the board had talked to to work with the fire department for the sleeping quarters, he submitted his documentation this afternoon. It went to Robin and to Jim. He has it broken down for the board's review for the next meeting to do the sleeping quarters.
Awesome, alright.
And that should be all the loose ends on my end.
Good deal, thank you.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you, Board.
Thanks, Chief.
Take care.
Have a good night. Chief, a question. How many calls did we have last year, same time?
I'd have to look at the annual report.
Well, the next one you do, just give us the last year. So like when you do June, give us June of 2023, just the number. Do you know what I mean?
The numbers that you have, we don't count this... That's a bird mix, that's a planned review.
That's fine.
Trucks rolling out of the station.
Yeah.
Good deal, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next, let's go to... Hold on a second before we go to approvals. Pat, what do you have? Do you have something?
Uh, no, I was going to see if you approved the new lifeguard.
Okay, that's about to happen.
And if you approved the senior trip funds.
Okay. Alright, I was just making sure you didn't...
I don't know, are we getting free tickets to this clambake?
You got $45? Are you a senior?
I don't know, I saw everything that was coming with the dinner. I started getting hungry.
What age group is, do we consider senior?
Is there... What's the age limits on the senior trips?
How old?
60.
Damn it.
See, I can go.
Are you close?
Two years.
Two years.
I can go.
I'm going to Maryland anyways.
Joe and I will go in support of the Select Board.
You get a free ticket?
Alright.
You can serve, but you can't eat.
It would be served. Good deal.
So, Trish, do you have anything before we go into our...
Okay, we'll just quick...
Yeah.
Jeez, I can sit here and pretend I'm Jim.
You could.
Use his microphone. No offense, Jim. So, no surprise, we have a heat wave going on. I sent you something from Gray, Maine. We're getting updates about every four hours. We are in the heat advisory, obviously. Newton is specifically mentioned. I've got a list of towns. I've called today. I've done all my calling to make sure everyone's okay. I've actually called Pat to check with her about the lifeguards. I checked with the transfer station for the AC in the Hopper Building because we had a problem with that. It is working fine. We don't need to run out and buy one. I did call the library to confirm they're all set. They are going to be closed tomorrow, much like Town Hall is. So if anyone needs anything regarding heat, I will be at the fire station. I will open up the cooling center if I have to. I'm just hoping that if people call, maybe I might just have to deliver a fan or water or whatever. But we're good to go, whatever is needed. And certainly, if I need help, I have five gentlemen, I'll call. Also, just part of the EOC, we've got... My car is almost ready. I did finally get it registered and I'm working on the sticker. And I've got a price for the logo. I think it's $555. I haven't seen it yet, so I haven't approved anything. But pretty soon, I'll actually have wheels. I just want you to know. Thank you very much. It's a long time coming. And Conservation and Recreation this Saturday, weather permitting, we are doing a nature walk. And supposedly, there's like 30 people or so that might be coming on the peanut trail. So we're meeting at the trailhead by the old fire station. And we'll be going in from there. We're reminding everyone, bug spray. Pat has little ditty bags to give out. But definitely bug spray, be prepared for that. The horseflies are absolutely terrible right now on the peanut trail. So if anyone in TV land is coming, be prepared. And lastly, I'm just going to say, in this heat wave, check your neighbors, check the elderly. You know, if you see our police or fire and they're doing details, they're out on the road, go buy them a water. Our lifeguard, same thing. Our transfer station, you know, pay it forward. Our road crew, certainly, that's out there in this heat, they have no choice but to do their job that way. So just reminding everyone in TV land, help us all out and check your neighbors. And I think that's it, yes.
Do we have to do something with the old car you have, the old?
Say that again, what?
The old black car you have there?
Yep, once we actually transfer, we've got to transfer antennas and radios. And I've already got... I'm told the console has been taken out of the old one to be put in the new one. Once we get that all done, there will be... The fire department will be doing a training with Jaws of Life like they did last time and invite all the other towns. And it was very successful, the last one.
Good deal.
So it will go down in flames. No, it won't. I mean, they'll have a good time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Highway Department's off tomorrow too, right?
Um, no, he's working. Yep.
Let's just make sure somebody checks in on Lonnie.
Yes, I checked on him today, but he is working. That's why I say, if you see him out there, it's horrific heat out there. You know, pay it forward, give him a bottle of water or Gatorade or something.
Can you get the sign here for tomorrow?
No, and here's why. We... I mean, I could, but we really don't have a good place to put it that doesn't affect the parking. I'm sure the fire department can bring it over, but we talked about that at Town Hall. I did... It's already... The sign has changed. It's been at the transfer station. I did change it. And it is on the website.
So there isn't a... Did you talk to Jim or no?
Which Jim?
O'Mara.
O'Mara, about bringing it here?
Yeah.
We talked in Town Hall about it and said, maybe not for this time, but maybe next time. If I have a place to put it here...
Which is fine. And that's... We'll figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, we can...
So until we figure out an actual place to put it, we'll hold off.
The plan was today, it was going to go to Gould Hill because that's a great location by the dry hydrant. But they were paving and everything, you couldn't get anything.
Oh, I know, okay.
Forget that, so that's why it stayed there.
That's fine, I was just asking, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll catch up with Jim and we'll try to figure it out.
And then after tomorrow, I'm going to change the sign to say... Well, Alex, I can change it tonight when I get out of here because they'll be closed. But we will change it to talk about the blood drive for the fire station for next week. So then I might move it to Gould Hill at that point. But in the future, when we're going to close, I will plan on getting it up here. It's just the timing just wasn't right this time.
Absolutely.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, with that said, let's move on to approvals, gentlemen.
We'll get it, Joe.
Okay, I move to increase fire departments. William Harwood's pay rate from $20.36 to $24 based on earned certifications achieved to be firefighter medic. New pay rate will be effective next coming pay period.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
I move to nominate Paul Michael Dorman to the state, to the state of New Hampshire as health officer for the town of Newton.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye. With that being said, now we can take that off the help wanted list?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to grant and abate many amount of $125.38 for a map and lot number 12-1-7, 43 Main Street, as recommended by the contract assessor.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
And we're skipping the next one?
Yep. Lifeguards, I move to hire Lily, Lily Tedfitt as a lifeguard for the 2024 season at the rate of $19 an hour.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
The next one is the Recreation Senior Trip Clambake. I move to approve the contract with Foster Clambake and Catering, the amount of $2,184.32 for the Recreation Senior Clambake.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
You're welcome, Pat.
Pat, everything's good.
Thank you, dear. Have a good night.
So you have three lifeguards now?
Three.
We will, yeah.
Three.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Good job.
The beach was well, well-attended today, and there was a lot of people there today and whatnot, and I guess they, lifeguards already had a call the.
Again, a lot of that goes towards the pay.
Yeah, the pay increase, yeah.
They were paying people what they were, and they're not going to other places.
I'd almost like to say, not you specifically, but, and not you specifically, but is somebody bringing the lifeguards like waters and stuff?
Their refrigerator is stocked.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just checking, that's all.
They're good, I checked on it today.
I'm going down, you know, periodically, at least every other day, but.
Sure.
We'd like to know that these two lifeguards, even though they're eighteen, they're confident and they're professional.
Awesome.
I already called the cops twice this week today.
Fantastic, great news. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat.
Joe, can you just, I'm back in the bathroom, we'll share the, uh, the end to the, okay?
Which one, please?
Forty-three Main should be, forty-three South Main.
South Main. Did I say North Main?
No, you just said Main.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to find it over here.
Well, we don't have to go through all that, Joe, are you okay with that amendment?
Yeah, just make, make your men.
You're okay with that, we're good. Agreed. All set. Okay, manifest.
Ready?
Yeah.
I move to approve the payroll manifest in the amount of $78,877, $870.44 for a pay period of May 19th through June 1st, 2024, with a pay date of June 6th, 2024. Payment includes $0 in opera costs.
All set on that. Motion made by Joe, A, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve the payroll manifest in the amount of $385.55 for a pay period, May 19th through June 1st, 2024, with a pay date of June 6th, 2024. Payment includes $0 in opera costs.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve the payroll manifest in the amount of $63,645.34 for a pay period, June 2nd through 15th, 2024, with a pay date of June 20th, 2024. Payment includes $0 in opera costs.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of $121,039.23 with a pay date of June 18th, 2024. Payment includes $32,500 to Pride Star Trinity EMS, and $16,817.20 to Ford Motor Company for police vehicle payment.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $5,528.49 from the cable revolving account with a pay date of June 18th, 2024, for an invoice to Armone Networks, Inc., for IT services.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal from the police special detail account in the amount of $9,958.75. Payment includes $9,078.32 to AmChow Wholesale Incorporated, and $880.43 to the state of New, state of New Hampshire Department of Transportation Fuel Distribution.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve the manifest in the amount of $25,527.13 with a pay date of June 8th, 2024. Payment is to New Hampshire Retirement System.
Second. Eighteenth.
Oh, June 18th, 2024 payment.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve an ACH debit withdrawal in the amount of $15.99 to pay for the Town Zoom account with the pay date of June 18th, 2024.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Go into the minutes?
Yeah, go.
I move to approve and accept a public meeting minutes dated May 21st, 2024, as written.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. I know we have select board goals on there, I'd just like to say we did accomplish one pretty much the day after we established them. Joe, do you want to talk about that a little bit, or?
Yeah, I installed the two iPads downstairs to sign up for e-subscriber, so any resident at the window for town clerk can now sign up to get town emails.
That's really cool that it was up, actually, now that we're doing this public. Robin, can you reach out to the people that manage our website? Ask them if we can have a report on the email signups, starting from when Joe hooked it up? They, it, I know they can generate it because I do it, so like, but I'd just like to see. Yeah, I would. Joe?
Just a couple of updates, we, we had a fundraiser at Game Time in Amesbury. Unfortunately, it wasn't all that well-attended, so we really didn't generate much funds from it, but in any event, we have another one coming up at Osseo's Family Restaurant in town on the 26th of this month, which is a Wednesday, and I believe they donate 25% of their proceeds from the, from 3 o'clock to closing, so.
So it's a week from tomorrow, people.
So we appreciate everyone's support. We also have another one coming up in Chipotle's, and I don't have the date on it currently, but it's going to be, I want to say it's either August 8th or 6th, but I don't have the right date on it right now.
Now, does anybody have to say anything, Joe, when they go to Osseo's, or is it just?
No, it's going to be the whole thing, they don't have to say anything, so, which is really good.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, let's see, the other thing I just want to get the, get the board's approval on is we've, Recreation, we're going to, we're going to start working on a five-year plan for Recreation, and we like to put together a committee of citizens from the town, board members and everything, to participate in it, and to just, just put together and see what the, what the town people want.
So almost like a steering committee.
Yeah, what we like to do is just review all the facilities that we currently have, and everything that we have, whether it be trails, the boat ramps or whatever, and, you know, see what we can get together and whatnot. So I'd like the board's permission to, you know, put that out to solicit, solicit members. And I've been asked, I've been asked on behalf of the board that if you'd like to join that committee also.
You know, usually I do that to you.
I know. But in any event, but what I did is I put, I put together an outline, and I'll tell you, some of it was plagiarized, but that's okay. But just a whole bunch of things that could be added and subtracted to.
Sure.
And filed some stuff from the master plan of 2099 that was in there that was interesting, and had some information as to Greenie Park, as to how, how we, how the town came about to receive in Greenie Park and the town beach and everything, so I'm going to put this in the minutes so we can file, so.
Fantastic.
So have we had anybody reaching out to the rec department about that rec coordinator, coordinator position?
I, I think we're waiting to have a posting.
We haven't posted it yet.
We haven't posted it yet.
Yeah, Jim's going to take care of that.
But that Jim, and Jim, and I believe Jim and Robin are working on that?
Yeah.
I know, it's been said, I didn't know if anybody, if I'd be a word of mouth.
No, not yet.
Funny though, in 1999, they were looking for a rec coordinator too.
Oh, exactly, yeah, things come around. One other thing I just wanted to say relative to this senior trip this year, which is going to be to Foster's in York, Maine. We're going to do that on August 7th, and we're going to be selling tickets. They're going to be selling tickets over here probably the week, I think it was July 24th or something like that. So the, a couple of people will be over here selling tickets for that. And we're also going to be doing an event at Packer Meadows on Thursday, August 22nd, which I'd like to invite all the board members to, whoever can be, you know, can be there for noon time to help us out with that. I kind of like volunteered this last night at the.
What day was it?
Uh, Aug, uh, August 22nd.
To be a grill master.
No, it's, it's a Thursday. We'll probably do hot dogs, hamburgs, sausages, and, you know, some sides.
So you want to do it there, not at the fire station?
No, right there, no, it's going to be just for Packer Meadows.
Oh, okay.
But we are going to do a, is, we are going to do a senior barbecue at the fire station.
Okay.
Which we're also going to invite all the town employees to as well.
Okay.
Good.
Good, it's fantastic.
Yeah, like we did last year.
Yep, hopefully, hopefully a lot more will take advantage of this year.
Yeah.
It's nice to see that, you know.
Things are changing, if you haven't noticed, so a lot of more people are starting to get involved.
You know, the residents interact with the employees, they can see, you know, who, who works for them.
Yeah, it is, it's really good.
That's all I have.
Okay. Bob, you got any news from the planning board, anything new?
Um, so we actually, I told you about the, the housing that we, we did. We had the public hearing was held, um, our last meeting, and I'll give you my shocked look about how many people showed up.
About as many as I hear.
Which was none, but we did talk about it and discussed it, and it was approved, so that's going in. Again, we talked about applying for the, the water grant, and there's also another part of, um, that housing that we were looking into, and there's going to be some changes that the planning board is going to have to put forth to the voters, and it, it's going to be, again, we always stress that an informed voter is our best asset, right? So there's been this huge push about workforce housing. This isn't affordable housing, it's not low income, it's based on what people make per year, and it could even be a doctor, it could be a plumber, it could be anybody, but because of the cost of housing has skyrocketed to the point where it's priced people out of being able to have their part of the American dream. So in order to prevent, and now this is where we want to pay attention, prevent a contractor from coming into town and proposing something according to the old RSAs and what we have in place, and then them getting denied, thus they would be able to go to court, sue the town, and be able to push their, and implement their housing project through, because we have not updated and developed a process and new ordinances and put them in place so that we can control it in Newton. So this is all going to start to come through as we work and navigate through all this, and we're doing that with Jen, who's been very helpful. So that's taking place, and that's going to, I think we're looking to be doing that this fall and getting that implemented, like I said, to prevent people coming in and being able to force things down the, the people of Newton's throat against what their wishes are and what they perceive how they want their town developed.
Good, awesome.
That's fantastic. Anything? Mike?
Nope.
No? The only thing I have is that we will be looking to do the public hearing on the communications tower sometime in July. I do not have a firm date yet, but it will be sometime in July, but that is all that I have. With that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe, all in favor?